We have a little bit of a change in personnel, but we have the JP Fire Department here and I will turn it over to you.
Okay, hi, I'm Kira. I've met most of everybody or you know. The Fire Marshal and then Chris Grover is here too. He's our maintenance supervisor, so we're here to basically answer any questions you guys may have. I know the report that Chief Schumacher sent to you all, just want to kind of give you things that are pertinent to the town of Beavista in addition to what he gave. Our call responses actually as of today are up to 284. So there's a definite increase and we're running about the same as last year. We are running a lot more medicals. We've built a, through our relationship with you all, the relationship with JP County EMS has been able to grow and be beneficial for not only just the people who live within the city limits, but on the outskirts of the north end of the county. So that's really been great for us to be able to build that rapport back after some strained relationships about 10 or so years ago during some consolidation talks. So thank you guys for allowing us to be able to do that. We have been working with Sean, we had some communication with Sean saying to date about like what was happening when the high water was coming to figure out what sort of response would expect from us and how we could best support him. So he was really forthcoming and really on the forefront of like calling us. I was like, hey, that's great that you called. Thanks. I was wondering where we were in happening. So we're just here to support him. I think having those conversations, he's ready and willing to reach out to us at any time. He's got my work cellphone as well as I believe the chief's. So that went really well. We, we actually just met with Randy today about supporting the American Legion again this year with fireworks. So I don't know if you guys are aware, we have all over the mortars up to the fireworks location for the American Legion. We load up all of their mortar holders and help them set up more so because they're not of a demographic that can do that. They're not the lightest things. And then it'll be myself and Chris that will help the American Legion wire and then be with them on the ignition until the 4th of July. Our participation will still be the same. We'll still have a type six engine, still be supporting the police department with traffic at the end as well as the education before the fireworks go off for the people who are spectating and have their personal fireworks. The fire district had a great showing and we want to also thank the town for the Billy Court of Memorial Park dedication and 5K. That's really important to kind of dear to our hearts. And so thank you for the, the support that the town has provided on that. We had a great time and really enjoyed it. It's kind of an annual thing for us now. B VAC was great. We really enjoyed the new event this year. That was super fun for us to be out and engaging in the public and just saying hi is really kind of what we do. I mean, people look at the fire track and say hi and kind of talk about some of the things that are going on with the fire district and expectations for the summer. We also did the rodeo. We have a couple of our volunteers who are pretty active on the rodeo ward. And so we're engaged with them usually annually now for showing out and that to support them. I myself met with planning and zoning with Joel and his team with Chad. Chad went came up and we had a, a meeting between all of us to make sure that there's clear communication and some expectations and how we as the three of us can work together for development, plan reviews, certificate of occupancy inspections, all the things that each of us are kind of involved in and what our processes are and how each of us can work together. So I think that that went really well. And I'm still looking to try to develop an S T R annual renewal process with Paula and Lilian. That's sort of been something that's kind of on the back burner, but not totally. So it's still on my mind to try to figure out what that looks like. It might be a code rewrite or something, town ordinance. And so working with Paula and Lilian to make sure that that's adequately communicated to you all still. So it hasn't been forgotten, but it's kind of something that hasn't been occurring right now. Because we are still, it's still, I'm still the only inspector for the town and the county. So just kind of doing the best that we can right now as things pick up both on the wildland side and just summer traffic wise. So I think that's kind of all that I have that I think pertains to the town, but yes, Mayor.
Did you all get involved in the interlocking?
We were IA, which is initial attack. We received the page that basically the time that they called in the smoke report. And so yes, we were up there that afternoon and then we stayed overnight at the request of the Forest Service. So, and then we actually yesterday got a resource order for our type six to go up there now. So yeah, we'll be up there supporting them however long they need to for that resource order.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Pertains to your report, but do you sometimes station any of the vehicles up by, up on the four mile at all?
No, we don't. Sometimes Jeff, our mitigation coordinator has been involved with Garna a lot. So we try to support, the way that we support kind of that endeavor is through use of our mitigation trailers. And what we do is we take them up there and deliver them so that they can clean up some of the dispersed camping sites and the trash. And, and then we just kind of haul it away for Garna. It's a little challenging for us to try to commit a resource up there, but we do have, we have used the U T V up there, supporting both EMS and then working with search and rescue occasionally, but search and rescue is much more equipped at that than we are with their equipment stuff. So yeah.
So we've seen some trucks up there, just obviously smaller vehicles. Like I was like, ah, I wonder if something's, you know, I was up there running and I was wondering like, I wonder what's going on. Like, oh, maybe, maybe they're just up here in case of something.
So the Forest Service does, does some patrols up there and then I know the sheriff's department partners with the Forest Service to do patrols. Usually in the summertime for dispersed camping to make sure that that stuff's out. We have gotten, and they'll call in like, hey, we've got an abandoned campfire or whatever. And we do go up there. That kind of stuff too, but not like specifically something committed directly to that.
Right on. That must have been more close than that. Well, thank you.
Do you get involved in any, any of the swift water rescues?
No. Swift water training is a pretty specialized training and it's, it's intense to say the least. Search and rescue is really good at responding. We have some really great rafting companies around here that really watch out for the people who are rafting each other as well as just recreational people. And so we support what's called the closing the box. But we don't get involved in actual river rescue in the river itself. So we go to bridges both here in town, south and north. We all kind of have different stations to where we know like, okay, based on this location, this is where this station's going to respond to first if there's a river event. But we are not trained or equipped by any stretch of the imagination. So how we can support like the other, the other raft companies and search and rescue is the best way that we can help facilitate with that. It's an intense training. I felt like, yeah, it's intense.
Well, we've been in this relationship with you for what, four years maybe? When was that you worked on that?
Three. Two, two?
Two, more than two, closer to four. Okay.
I don't know. I try to gauge things on like how old my kid is and stuff.
I know it's working well.
Well, I hope so. I mean, I, from our standpoint, like I said, you know, the, the relationship with EMS has really blossomed under the relationship that we have with you guys, trying to provide the same response to the community members for things that aren't fire calls. And that's really enabled us to have a better relationship with them. But it also, I mean, most of our volunteers on the north end live here, live either in town or just outside of town. And so we're all here. And having that community involvement has been really special for us instead of like, well, we don't want to step on anybody's toes and worried about like jurisdictional stuff. So I think for our standpoint, it's been really great. I mean, I hope that it's the community and the board saying that it's been beneficial for you guys. I mean, through Brian, I would hope that you guys or directly to us that if you guys had any concerns or hey, we'd really like to see you guys participate in this manner, that you could communicate that to us. Yeah, we, I mean, we think we're doing what the community expects. I don't know that anybody from the fire district, even in the town, has done like a survey of any kind to say, hey, are we meeting your needs for fire specific? I know that that's something we're trying to get out there, but I don't, just if somebody's like, hey, we really like you to do this. We're like, great, we can do that. No problem. The library contacts us all the time. We're like, destination story time. We're like, great, come on by. And then it's like 80 people. Okay, but yeah, we're open and willing to, you know, if there's something that the town is looking for us to specifically do that you guys are looking for, then by all means, reach out, let us know.
I can say from a personal level, I've done that and it's been a wonderful process and y'all have been really supportive. So thank you.
Of course. Yeah, we love doing public events. You know, we participate in Gold Rush and try to like do, participate in events as are appropriate for us.
Any other trustee questions?
I did have a question and it may be better going to the chief. I don't know because it's from the report. I just was a little bit curious about the all-inclusive new station safety program and what that means.
Sure. Yeah. So we actually don't have a safety officer now. Our safety officer, I don't know how many of you know Marty Johnson. He used to be with the sheriff's department. Marty was our last official safety officer. And so when Marty retired from the sheriff's department and the fire department, we haven't had an official safety officer since then. Ron Hassel would fill that role on a wildland incident. And again, with some of the things that occurred, we're lacking in some of those. Stephen is, Stephen's gone to specific fire department, safety officer training to be able to make sure that our gear is functioning the way that it needs to be. So it's not just like incident ground things. It's all the stuff, health, safety, trying to make sure that we're taking care of both staff and the volunteers and doing the things that we need to do. So yeah, I think that that's, I believe that that's what he's looking at. And we're, we're also looking at trying to do, Colorado State University does a super inclusive, it's basically a stress test specific to firefighters. And so it's, it's a treadmill. It's a breathing. It's a stretching. It's a, it's a crossing gamut deal. And they, CSU does that up at their location, their campus in Fort Collins. And so it's something that's offered to the fire departments across the country or sorry, across the state. We have to go up there to do it because we don't have the facilities for them to come down here to be able to do those tests. So I know that chief was trying to at least, at the very least, do it for the staff members, just to kind of like gauge like, because cardiovascular disease is a big deal. Just because we have such highs and lows in our adrenaline and, you know, those type of things. So I know that he's looking to try to do that within the next year or so, which we've been trying to do, but it's a commitment to go up there and it's fasting in this whole thing. So, but.
Thank you, Kira.
Sure. Great. You guys know how to reach us. Like I said, you can reach us through Brian or directly. Please feel free if you have any questions or anything, just let us know.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Oh, now we will hear from the police department.
Yes, thank you. Okay, first one for you. I figured this would be easier. Hopefully it works as opposed to saying next slide every few minutes. I'm going to offset a little bit so I can see what I'm talking about here.
Sound effects too.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. I'm Dean Morgan. I'm the chief of police, Beavista Police Department. So I put together some slides to kind of document some things that's going on in our department. If you have any questions during the slideshow, feel free to ask and I'll try to talk fast because there's a lot of information I want to cover. Hopefully there's some time at the end for questions. So this is our current staffing. My command staff consists of myself, Commander Shane Garcia, who's my right-hand man. He's here tonight to observe. And also our first female sergeant with the department, Megan Mitchell. And then Sergeant Christopher Marusaris, he couldn't be here because he's a weekend night supervisor. So he's probably just crawling out of bed. You can see some of our other staff. We have an investigator, several on patrol and some of the patrol officers do dual duties. And you can see Officer Pomfret, for example, is our canine. Officer Flores is our officer coordinator. And she's actually at SRO Instructor School this week. You can also see we have a vacant position. So usually our staff were 12, we're down to 11. We do have a guy that's probably going to be hired. He's going to start the academy in August. So we won't have him until late. We also have Grant. He does a great job at code enforcement and he supplements a lot of what we do out there. Judy, who's our court clerk and administrative supervisor and Melissa Goodwin, who's our assistant. She also acts as a public information officer and an evidence technician. This is the mission police department. When I became chief, we read the mission statement. Old one was about a page and a half and most mission statements are usually a couple of sentences. So we consolidated the old one and then added some things that we think represent a good mission for our officers. One of the worst things with PowerPoints is if somebody sits here and reads the slides. So I'm going to let you guys read the slides yourself. This is our vision statement. I inherited this from Chief Tidwell, who I think inherited from Chief Hampton before him. Our vision hasn't changed. It stays the same. Part of our dynamic is we believe in the concept of leading by legacy. And that's part of our vision statement. So that Chief Tidwell and the chiefs before him built a legacy and they handed it off to other officers to maintain that. I was the next chief after Jimmy and when I retire, we hope to maintain within our ranks, somebody who continue building that vision. If you want to learn more about the BVPD, we have a Facebook page. We have quite a few followers and we communicate with the public a lot with that. We also have an Instagram page. I don't know what Instagram is. I'm too old, but our public information officer uses that a lot. And then we have our webpage. And then if you have questions or comments, feel free to reach out to me. The first topic I wanted to talk about is training. I think this process where department heads can come and talk to the town council is really beneficial because there's a broader picture of what's going on with the police department and just the police nationwide and in Colorado that if I come once a month to, it's kind of like, well, here's what we did last month. But it doesn't really capture some of the issues facing the police department. So I think this is a great idea because it gives department heads the opportunities to paint the bigger picture. So one of the things I wanted to address is training. I'll start with what it takes to become a police officer. A few years ago, there was a lot of anti-police rhetoric. There was a lot of talk that police had to go through very little training. Then they're given a badge and a gun and set loose. That, that's not accurate. Just to become a police officer, you have to go through about 20 hours of training, or 20 hours, 20 weeks of training at a state certified police academy. We've mostly been using the Pike's Peak State College Academy in Colorado Springs. After that, they go through an intense 14-week field training program based off the San Jose model of field training. And that's with a certified officer, for example, Commander Garcia and Sergeant Mitchell are both field training officers for our department. Especially after 2020, there was a huge decline in people wanting to be police officers. And it got so bad that Governor Polis passed a career advanced Colorado, where the state is actually paying people to go to police academies now. And we have really benefited from that because we've sent several people through the academy. And initially we had to pay for, through our budget. And then once they passed that, the state's covered most of the academy costs. Outside of that, once officers are out of the academy, our training mandate is through Colorado Post, which is police officer standards and training. They have annual and biannual mandates. So every year we have to get certain number of training in firearms, arrest control, driving. We're also, we have to do de-escalation, which is a very important skill, anti-bias in policing, community policing. And I said, I wasn't going to read the slides. So you can see some of those mandates. Outside of that, we need to get several training hours to maintain our skills and certifications. And that can be a huge spectrum of, of topics. There's just a representative example there. And those sheets on the side, they're just some screenshots I took of all the data that I collect on our training and we send it to post. And last year, I think our officers had over $700 hours of advanced training and that continues year after year. So it's always ongoing training. Just real quick on our firearms training. That's the rifle we use. Commander Garcia got those for us when I became chief. It's an AR-15 rifle. We have to qualify with that usually quarterly. We have to do night shoots, the environments police are in. I think I heard a statistic that 80% of police shootings take place at night. We also do cold weather shoots, which have a whole different dynamic of having to wear gloves and things like that. So that was this last January. We were out on the sportsman's club range doing that. And a lot of dynamics at night shoot as far as you flash lights, when patrol car lights are flashing around. These are some optics I got the department through a grant a couple of years ago through the justice assistance grant, which is a great tool for our officers. We also have to do a lot of training in arrest control. It's one of my favorite pictures there. So we carry the Taser seven and most officers to get certified with that, take a ride. So that's Megan several years ago, taking a Taser ride. I'm going to play the video because there's a lot of language.
Is that Grant in the middle there?
These are called less lethal tools and they're a very good intermediate tool for officers in different situations. We also offer pepper spray officers. Grant got certified in that. And we kind of have a thing that nobody fights alone in this family. So I took a hit with him. So you can see me spraying my eyes out to flush the pepper spray out. It's very painful. And that's my caller ID picture of Grant. So when he calls me, that, I'll try. We also carry the Peacekeeper baton. A lot of people kind of questioned the baton after certain instances in the past, wondering if police still carry them. We do. It's, it's a really good tool. The photo on the lower side there is from my body camera from a couple of years ago. We had a pursuit coming into town. That guy hit some cars, looted the sheriff's office. For some reason he stopped at the stoplight. I was able to approach him and I was about to break his window with the baton to get him out of the vehicle. I think his blood alcohol was .257. So super dangerous. That can be a use of the baton. That other photo is about 120 pound female officer with the LA County Sheriff's Office. She was attacked by that man who's obviously much larger than her and she was able to control the situation and go home by using her baton. So it is a tool we give our officers. We give them a lot of training in it. We also have a pepper ball gun, which can help in a lot of situations. Again, it's a less lethal tool. Here's some pictures of us doing a ground fighting, arrest control, handcuffing. Our new building is super nice because we have a space to train now, whereas in the past, we had to find places. So the red mats, that was the old high school wrestling room. The green mats were an old wrestling school down in Nathrop. And the one in the middle, we just found the park and rolled around on the grass doing some training. Lots of other trainings. This is following stop training you did in 2023, driving. If you guys know Mike Bowers, that's his old patrol car. He's a retired Salida officer. I think it's a 1944. Shane's in there. And we have to, at least once a year, we have to get about four hours of training at least on driving. There's no track for us to do that here. So we have to go use a track in Alamosa to do that training. And here's just a quick video. Shane was driving and I was filming. It's, it's a pretty fun day. This was a training we did earlier this year with the sheriff's office called Stop the Bleed. All of our officers carry gunshot trauma kits and several tourniquets. And the sheriff's office, Donnie Smith, who was an EMT, helped us with that. It was a really good training. Megan's training uniform right there is pretty special.
That's called fashion.
Another training we do every year, usually before school starts is active killer response, which is response to somebody who's actively either attacking a school or a business. We incorporate into our training what we call reality-based training. There's a lot of studies about that, but it's the concept of training like you fight and vice versa. So we create very realistic environments for the active killer training. I'll play the, the 911 that kind of kicked off the training that day and just give a quick explanation of what happened. But we made it so realistic. We had a man in the school firing off blank rounds. So there was gunfire. And the principal, we had her call 911 and then you can hear some of it in the background and you can hear that it was, it became so real to her. She gets emotional during this call. So for those of you who know Mrs. Moss, you know, she usually doesn't look like that. So we actually had a guy come in and he does what's called mulage, which recreates combat style injuries. So as responders responded to our incident, they encountered people. You can see a guy lying in the hallway there who had a mock gunshot wound. So officers and EMTs and fire had to, you know, navigate, hey, how do we address this? How do we, what's the best way to handle this? And is the threat still at school and where is the threat? That was the guy that had gone in firing blank rounds. Officer Comfret, we actually used Reach in this too, and he was a part of an officer down scenario. The ambulances were all tied up. So Deputy Tucker there took him to the airport car and he got to fly on Reach out of the airport. So I have a whole video of this. If anyone's interested, let me know. I can email it to you. Here's some more video of that day. The JP County Tactical Team was a big part of this response. What's interesting in this photo, there's Miss Moss again, poor lady. The, I talked about infrastructure and resources for first responders in the county. I think Josh Hadley with EMS had three ambulances available this day. They had multiple live medical calls during the training. So obviously they have to handle those. So for the training, I think we had eight mock injured people on one ambulance that went down to heart of the Rockies. That just shows that our systems and our resources can quickly get overwhelmed, especially if we had a large scale incident. Rich Atkins with emergency management hired some, didn't hire, but asked some people out of Colorado Springs to come independently evaluate. So we learned a lot of lessons and that was one of the last. Mass casualties. I think the government defines mass casualties as three or more. Is quickly overwhelm our resources. Another thing we do is the every 15 minutes thing with the fire department. I think I know that guy in front there. Good guy. Yep. And that's a mock car crash we do for the school. It's a really great event. It's usually done around prom season. We do it every two to three years. And it's an instructional thing for kids to recognize the dangers of drinking and driving or texting and driving. And just the community that comes out to help us is, is fantastic. State Patrol was doing road sides on a student volunteer. We actually take them to the jail so they can experience what it's like to be booked in. Then they take that student in front of the judge. The district attorney's office appears on their behalf and they have a public defender assigned. The kids that were injured in the driving, they're actually taken to heart of the Rockies. And not only is this really impactful for the kids, but it's also extra training for us. Rockies loves it when we do this because then they can do these mock. Rockies loves it when we do this because then they can do these mock um emergency room car trash things, which, you know, helps them with their training. Um and it's huge that that all these entities come together to help with that. Here's just some photos of some things we do in the community. Every October, we do a coffee with the cop. Where um we posted on Facebook, say, hey, come on down to Brown Dog or one of the coffee shops. We'll buy you a cup of coffee. If there's anything you ever wanted to ask a police officer, now's your chance. So you can see some citizens came in. The sheriff's office joined us. Chief Tidwell um stopped in and and uh we had a good time with a lot of those citizens. I think somebody mentioned estimation story time. So this is our training room, and that told the library the same thing, like, yeah, come on in, like eighty kids. And their parents. Um and it was a great time, and and we loved doing things like that. It was a lot of fun. Uh one of the other big things we do is shop with the cop at Christmas. And the credit for this goes to uh Chief Johnson with Salida. I think he and his wife started it. Um every year, cops are kind of fighting each other to to be able to participate. Now, what this does is um there's underprivileged kids. We usually get their names from the schools, and the public donates a lot of money. Last year, I think it was over five thousand dollars we had in donations. We were able to give each kid, I think, close to two hundred fifty dollars. And then we take them out to the stores. We take them out for coffee, um and they're able to buy presents and gifts for their families. And it it's a great experience for us and the kids. Then afterwards, we go back to um either the steam plant or the PD where we wrap all the presents with them. It's a super good time. We also do tip a cop. I don't know who that babyface is. Sam Trujillo, a retired state trooper coordinates this, but we go to Jan's Restaurant and we uh basically serve the food and stuff, and then all the tips that the customers give goes to Special Olympics. So that's a really good. Um that's Melissa. She's our public information officer, and we try to be very transparent, so when anything kind of newsworthy happens, we always try to give a press release to the newspaper and I do Facebook posts about it. Um we do a lot at our schools. I've always believed that the schools are the heart of the community because that's where our kids are. Uh so there's Megan when she was the school resource officer doing a baking contest, and they made a pancake shaped like a gun. Uh we help with the forensics class, which is like crime scene investigation. So Amber does a class on blood spatter. Um so the kids are are going through that. Um we work with the special needs kids a lot. Again, with one of the girls and showing her some of the equipment in her car and Shane um standing outside our old department. Um this is the I Love You Guys Foundation. We um had them come up a couple of years ago to host a training on school safety and security. We had um agencies from around the state attend that, and they um we also have some churches who are interested in security teams come and participate. Um that was Megan's first day of school um as an SRO. I don't know who that babyface. Um there's Mr. Campden. He he came and helped us with one of the crime scene classes. Uh this year, we did a reunification drill with the school, which went really well. Um back to school night's one of the events we really enjoy, where we can give um parents and kids a lot of information about the school's safety protocols, and we hand out um stickers and plastic badges and things. Uh last year, maybe two years ago, with Darren Patterson Christian Academy, they uh their fourth grade class wanted to make a book for kids that might experience something traumatic, um and the police show up. Um we can sit down and go through this book with them, and it can help calm them down. And then special needs class, um at the time it was Keith Lee's Corner, they um made some tools, which were uh for kids that that have difficulty communicating. So there's pictures and things, and it can help the police interact with kids with autism or things like that, where they can point at different pictures um if they get lost. And we use this, I think, at last community dinner where a little with autism got lost, and he just would not verbalize. And we brought this book out. He was able to point to some of the pictures and help us, help him find his mom and dad. Um we do a lot of parades and escorts, not just for the town, but for the school. Um this is the bike to school day. This is the Halloween parade, which is one of my favorites. The paint there says graveyard shift, and the guy had fangs and Megan had elf ears. Um this is escorts to state. This year, we did the girls' soccer team and the boys' baseball team, and then every year we do homecoming. Um special events for town I wanted to highlight. Um twenty twenty four has about a hundred twenty special events permitted. Um obviously, we do the uh parade of lights. And of those, I'm kind of highlighting the ones where it involves a police presence, where we have to shut down roads and tow vehicles and things like that to clear routes for the parade. Which, as we consider special events and things, it's just kind of a reminder of the ask that this type of event is on town employees, not just the police, but also Public Works and Rec, as they have to move barricades and and get people out there. And and we're happy to do that, but just I put it out there, just as the more things we add, the more um it puts on staff. Our Fourth of July parade is probably one of our biggest parades of the year. This is from last year. You can see the crowd sides are just massive. Have to do a lot of crowd fencing and barricades. You can see how close they're getting to some of the both sides of the street. And events go on throughout the day, all the way into the night, to the fireworks. Um the car show is usually a couple of days after that, which also involves street closure. Um like Akira mentioned, on Gold Rush Days, it's pretty active time. Fourteen or Fest. Um and then there's all the other private events. Um there's weddings pretty much every weekend throughout the summer. Sometimes multiple places like the Orpheum, the Surf Hotel. I think it's called the Loft now. Um and then weekly summer concerts like at the Apple Farm or down on South Main. And that just generates a lot of um calls for police service for whatever it might be, intoxicated people, noise complaints because of music, extra traffic. Some of the park um concert events on South Main this last time over Memorial Day, there's a lot of parking complaints. So it just creates extra work and things that that we deal with. The community dinner is a big one. This one, Commander Garcia pointed out, was probably one of the first one because there's only two rows of table, and now the tables are running four deep. Um I just kind of highlighted just in the two blocks there, all those circles are police cars, and it goes on for another block, and it's growing every year. And that's a super good event. Um but for the police, it's it's a concerning event because you get big groups of people like that together. We we are responsible for their safety. Um Chaffey Fire always helps us with this, and there's a lot that could happen that we're trying to be very watchful for. Equipment and technology for the department. Um a couple of years ago, I asked for a quite a bit of money to get Lexi pole. Um and that's worked out great. I'm a big fan. Just real quick, what it is, is um it's a live-in policy manual. It's written by attorneys and reviewed by attorneys to help us mitigate liability. Officers can pull it up on their phone. Um it's as simple as clicking on a tab to access the different policies. Um if an officer stops a vehicle and needs to tow it, um they may ask you, hey, is this within policy? So they can pull it up right on their phone. The other thing that this does is you'll see these um critical update notices. So outside of having somebody full-time trying to to look for legal updates by the passage of state or federal laws, um that would be almost impossible to keep up with. So when we pay, I think, about five thousand a year for our our Lexi pole license, they have attorneys that will send us these updates. And here's an example. This is just from a couple of weeks ago. There's a new Colorado law about reporting on child abuse, and all I'd have to do is uh administrators click on this to implement this into our new policy. It also has daily training bulletins, which I really like. Um officers just click on the um topics such as civil disputes, and it gives them a scenario and a quick test question um to help them become very fluent with the policy, which is important because if you don't know the policy, it's kind of not, doesn't have a lot of value. Um Sergeant Mitchell got this for us. Just within a couple of weeks, we've um signed up for leads online. Um we're experiencing a lot of cases that involve um internet pornography with children. Um there's an Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force out of Colorado Springs that gives us some cases where they say, hey, someone in your town is either downloading or distributing this. Um so we're having to dump a lot of computers and cell phones. So this technology um allows us or helps us to do that, and it also helps us track stolen property like across the country. It's it's amazing what it can do. And the flock safety cameras are something I'll probably be asking for in the upcoming budget cycle. Um I'll talk about that when that time comes, I guess. Our body armor. Several years ago, a nonprofit out of Colorado Springs named Shield Six Sixteen, um a citizen in Black Forest who loves this area. He paid probably close to twenty thousand dollars to outfit every officer with um rifle-rated body armor. Um most of that's good for five years, so it's all expired. Um this year, I got a grant for about ten thousand to replace some of that. Um so we have tools like that. One of our more expensive pieces of equipment is the body camera, which we're required by law to wear. Uh here's a couple of body camera images from different things. This was from the Pinion Court Cabin Fire. Uh quick story on this guy, um when I was a deputy in Park County. A guy claimed the deputy um hit him in the head with his baton, and he had an injury just like that. So he sued the sheriff's office for sixteen billion dollars. Um later on, they found out a baton cannot cause an injury like that, so they changed the story to say that the officer pistol-whipped him. Um that went all the way to federal court, and thankfully Park County won, because what that guy did is he headbutted the back of the officer's, the screen in the back of his car and cut his head like that. So this is from twenty nineteen. The guy transported to the jail did the exact same thing. And I think he did it to try to make an excessive force claim on me. The good thing is, is it was all on body camera, so you know, that's instantly put to bed or put to rest. So that's one of the huge values of body cameras. Officers love our body cameras, and it's just for things like that. Also remember that the public can film us. Um this is some uh cellphone footage of Officer Marusars. Couple of years ago, a a lady got assaulted with staff at Loves. Um Chris was trying to arrest her. He was by himself. Um her boyfriend, I don't know, the guy in the pink, came and and started assaulting Chris. Um Chris had a ride along that night. I actually had to step in and help him before the sheriff's office got there. Um so body cameras are huge in situations like that. That's Megan. That's her foot, and that's a pit bull trying to attack her. And so it it captures all kinds of things. That was just in March, so. And I had your sweatpants on that day.
Nope.
No, you did not.
And it probably would have been better off with that.
This is a burglary call from a couple of years ago. Um police officers recognize this is a super dangerous situation. We got a call for a break-in. A lot of times, those are false alarm, but as myself and Officer Mitchell, Jesse Mitchell went in. We located a man with a headlamp and in the dark in a flashlight robbing the house. You can't see his hand there because it's behind the wall. Um this is Jesse's Taser. Um the man had a blowtorch in this hand that we can't see, but when it comes out, it looks a metallic gun-shaped object. This is easily a situation that could turn lethal very quickly, and he wouldn't drop it. Um I was next to him with lethal force, meaning my firearm. Um he wouldn't drop it. Um he became combative, and we were able to resolve it by using a less lethal option, which was the Taser. So just an example of how high-risk some of these calls can be for us and how important some of these tools we have are. Um this is our report writing system. Um it's uh it's pretty outdated, our old one Omnigo, so um we bought this one. And I think I've showed the town council before, but these are just some of the features it has, like a mapping thing where we can map crime and things. Um Colorado law requires that when we initiate contact um with citizens, um police anymore, we have to document the analytics, not their names, but their race, gender, duration of the stop, where their force was used, things like that. Um and we have to submit that to the Bureau of Justice every month. Um so we got the Citizen Contact App. Officers can just pull it up on their phone, click on the option and enter the data. So this is from a traffic stop Officer Flores had. It also has a digital business card, so people can just scan it, and they'll get this little business card with the officer's picture, and um that's also Colorado law, that they have to be able to call a supervisor or something if they want to make a complaint or complaint. Uh Language Line, this is another piece of technology we got. It helps us um interact with um non-English speaking people. Megan recently used it on someone who was speaking Mandarin. Now, we've been using it a lot lately with Spanish-speaking people. Super helpful. Um Shane came up with this one. It's called Interview Now. I think it's about a thousand a year. And um they did some studies on how modern, like millennial generation and things, you know, how they find out about jobs. And apparently, it's not by Facebook anymore, newspaper. Um it's through Instagram and things like that, so. This puts a QR code on our Facebook page, and people can just scan that with their phone, and it gives them, it kind of leads them through an application process for a police officer, and we've gotten several applicants off of that. So that's a really cool thing. Some of our special teams, there's our buddy Thor, our canine. Um we're part of the Combined Tactical Team with the Chaffey County Sheriff's Office, which includes some of our guys, Sheriff's Office and Salida PD. Um that's from a drug bust from a concert a few years ago, but we have a Chaffey County Drug Task Force, which is similar. It's combined officers from the three different agencies here. Um co-response, um been working a lot with Sol Dista, and they currently have one co-responder and can't remember a couple um mobile clinicians, I think they call them.
She's working on getting a second co-responder.
Yeah, we we use them a lot, and that helps us with mental health calls. I think there's a public expectation. It's not ideal to have armed police officers deal with mentally people who are in crisis unless they're armed and dangerous. Um so coming on duty this morning, we had two mental health calls in town, and our co-responder kind of handled them both um at the same time. It was a suicidal party, and one was a mom who was in crisis. Uh that's a a gun seizure we had last year. Um fighting crime, here's some of our stats. I'll just let you kind of read through that. You can see our numbers are going up. And just our calls for service from last year, rough timeframe to this year is a ten percent increase. Uh crashes, these photos are actually, I just put them in there because they're entertaining. Um this was a call in the county, but it's still worth showing. It's, this is a car that hit a hole, and it's still alive.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just stuck on top of the car. But yeah, crashes come in all shapes and sizes. Last year, I think we had eighty-one crashes, which that's a big number for a little being a vista, and as you guys are out on the streets, you can see there's a lot of traffic in town. Uh something else we do is High Visibility Enforcement, which is our DUI overtime. It's a grant. We get through CDOT, and they pay officers overtime to go out and hunt DUIs, and this is their calendar of the different enforcement periods throughout the year. And when I made this slide, we're up to twenty-three. I think the previous slide said twenty-two, and as of today, I think we're closer to twenty-five. Um some challenges we're facing nationally, like I said, I'll let you guys kind of read the slide. But anti-police, defund the police movements, especially that were really big in twenty twenty, made a lot of people, a lot of cops, they forget this. I don't want to do this anymore. So there's a huge retirements. And then low applications. There's so much attrition, and then nobody wanted to do the job. Um a lot of the states, Colorado included, have made laws that make it really easy to sue police, which that comes with the territory, but there's a lot of people that don't want to operate in that environment. Um a lot of agencies that have addressed those issues are finding they're having to pay people a lot more to do this job. And they're also having to use hiring bonuses and things like that. Um there's a study there that mentions that smaller departments with fewer than fifty officers are still really struggling, and I would definitely say we're a part of that. I don't know if you can read that or not, but that's just um a statement from the Bureau of Justice and the Community Policing Office. Just talking about the challenges, um Police Department. Again, nationally, we're seeing an increase in violence against police. Soft-on-crime policies are hurting police and citizens. Um Shane gave me an article last week on um from Police One that shows how a very concerning statistic that of the officers killed in the line of duty annually, nineteen percent were rural in twenty nineteen, and in twenty twenty-three, fifty-six percent of officers killed in the line of duty were in rural areas, which is populations of less than eleven thousand. State of Colorado, this highlights some challenges as an example that the Colorado State Patrol is facing. Uh the passage of Senate Bill twenty dash two seventeen took away qualified immunity from officers. When you're going into a profession where you have to make um life and death snap decisions, and you don't have qualified immunity, and it's an environment that's easy to sue the officers, a lot of people said, we're not, we're not doing that. Um training mandates, I I listed a lot of those, and that was to highlight the fact that officers sometimes are in the classroom more because that's what the law is requiring of us now. This is a felony stop we did just outside the community center about two weeks ago. Um what's interesting about this, if you read, it says if an officer doesn't activate their body camera, they're presumed guilty um of acting dishonestly. This Officer Flores engaging the armed suspect um had a felony nationwide warrant, and this is her hand turning on her body camera. Not ideal. At the BVPD, these are some of the challenges we're facing um related, kind of the national level, state level, trickling down to us. Cost of living is a challenge here, increasing demands and expectation on police. Um like I said, um having to balance training and maintaining quality calls for service. Um we're worried as supervisors about um Containing quality calls for service. Um, we're worried as supervisors about um. Officer burnout, morale and well-being, mental challenges. We're at minus seventy-seven percent of our overtime budget. Um, I do want to throw out there certain special events I don't think are a police function, um, concerts and things. I think that should be subsidized to private security. I don't think tax dollars should have to pay officers to be private security when our role here, as I said, is to serve our citizens at large in need. Um, how do we do it? Not very easily. This is uh, this month's schedule. Um, like I said, there's supposed to be twelve, but there's only eleven here. And you can see trainings, um, you can see vacations, um, there's shifts where officers are on by themselves. Um, so it's a challenge and we do all of that, just kind of highlighted with this and Shane does the scheduling. So huge for Shane. Cool, I'm right on time. These last few slides are just some fun pictures of some fun things we do. My officers were making fun of my aging and I told them I could hoodslide like the Dukes of Hazzard, but they didn't believe it. So I had to show them. I got a video of that. Um, that's at the hats flying. This is a cops versus firefighters softball game we had. This is the Halloween parade. Um, Billy Cordova run. Uh, there's the mayor with us. We do a nine eleven stair climb up to the Midland.
I did.
Christmas party. Um, one of the churches had a police appreciation night for us. Um. That's our Fourth of July barbecue we had after the parade. Um, we've, we've been matchmakers here because Megan and Jesse, they ended up getting married and it was holy matrimony. Had a lot of donuts at the wedding and then Officer Marusars, when he got married, he wanted his brooms, men and women to be his, his coworkers. So there we all are. Uh, celebrating his happy day, which was really cool. Uh, it's Billy Cordova again, some of the car shows. And yeah, that's a car show that came through town. And like it says, Officer Farmfro was.
Not bad for the cars.
That's all I've got. Sorry I talked fast. Um, I guess there's a time I can come back if there's more questions, but I think we have a couple of minutes to. So that was a lot.
Yeah, just encourage any trustees who are new or haven't to do ride along. It was really interesting. I did it back in twenty seventeen with then Sergeant.
Yeah.
Sergeant Maury. And, and it was real interesting. Maybe not exciting in January, but.
Mine was really exciting. I'll be there in mid-July.
We're excited. You know how to get ahold of us if you have any questions. Thank you for taking the time to listen. Sorry if it was long-winded.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, Ardu.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, we can take a little break to seven o'clock. Or for y'all. Good evening, everyone. Are we ready, Brian? Okay. Um, welcome to the meeting of war trustees for the town of Beano Vista, Colorado. It's June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The time is seven oh five. And I ask you to please silence your cell phones. And Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pegg, here, Pusty Hike, here, Mr. Crutsey, here, Pusty Rice, here, Pusty Rosenhour, here, Mr. Rowe, here.
Please join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustees, you have before you an agenda for tonight's meeting. Uh, does anyone have any um, changes that should be made to the agenda? I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda. It's written.
So moved.
There we go. So we have the Crutsey and um, Rowe. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And then you have your consent agenda, which has some minutes and uh, reports from various departments. Uh, also, it has a resolution to appoint Bill Bryans as an alternate member of the Historic Preservation Commission. And a resolution, um, appointing Judith Menze as a member of the Tree Advisory Board. And we want to thank those people for being willing to um, serve their community. We appreciate that. Um, and now we have public comment.
We need to approve the consent.
Oh, sorry. Yes, of course we do. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So we have Rowe and Hike. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted. Now we have public comment. The clipboard where you sign in.
You have no one signed in, Mayor.
There is no one signed in. You can keep that sheet.
Something.
Okay, there are no public comments here. Are there any online?
Uh, nobody has their hand raised?
Okay, um, then we will uh, go ahead with the business items. And the first of them is a development agreement with the Crossing Major Subdivision. Uh, and we will um, hear from Joel on this. Um. And um, this will be a resolution of the town of Beano Vista, Colorado. Approving a development agreement with Crossman's Development Limited for the property known as the Crossing Subdivision, Beano Vista, Colorado.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Um, so we have a few things related to the Crossing Subdivision. Um, the first one is a development agreement and there's. Uh, about renaming some streets and then there's some vacation of rights away. Um, and this follows up, you recall, two weeks ago, we looked at the public improvement agreement. Um, we had, prior to that, we had twenty of the maybe had a presentation from. Crossing developers to kind of give everyone a heads up what's going on and this is um, the tail end of um. You know, a long major subdivision process. So uh, this particular item is a development agreement. Um, often a development agreement will come before the board if there's a phasing or. You know, something that needs to carry over from um, from. Part A of a project onto part B, et cetera. This uh, the crossing does not have phasing. It's just this one project. Um, and uh, as described in the public improvement agreement. Um, however, there are some unique circumstances to it, um, that. You know, kind of required us to do development agreement. Those, in particular, that was the tie to the donor grant. Um, and the expenditure of that, those funds to enable affordable housing and the tie to that affordable, affordable component. As well as um, water allocation associated. And so um. Because of those two items, we said, well, let's, let's make sure we get a development agreement in place. Um, for the board to approve. There are two other components to it. One is um. A, just a, a statement that says. The sanitation lines will be up to sanitation standards because the public improvement agreement kind of developed the sanitation district as well, which is um. Which is fine, but we just want to encapsulate that here. Um, and then we also, uh, there's a need to conduct percolation tests. Still, um. The, the soils test was done and everything looks good, but there's some ground truthing that. Um, we'd like to happen and that can't take place really until some of the site is cleared and there's pure boulders and those sorts of things. And there's a. Uh, there's, you know, documentation from the engineer to such, you know, that's all. So um. We added the percolation test requirement to happen before um. The bill of permit. So um, so those four items are in here. Um, the process with this, you know, we, we still have. Uh, the final plat approval is um, the final report is being written by RG and Associates. The consultant playing engineering term that we use. Um, and that'll come before town administrator here. In any day, really, um, for review and approval. The, you know, the associated Mylar that will record with the county, the development grant, the public improvement agreement, all those things. None of that will happen until. Actual final signature happens, um, Brian, and then. Uh, we'll take it all down and record. So and the, the vacation, if the ordinance passes to vacate some rights aways, that'll happen. That'll be recorded. The other documentation. So. So before you is this development agreement and um, if you have any. Any questions, um. Uh, we're here, the town attorney's here. Paul applicant is here as well.
Could you describe the percolation test, please?
Not really. So. Paul, don't go down that road. It doesn't need to do it. Really, it's, has to do with drainage. So retainer's pond, stuff like that. So where the water is funnel to a retainer's pond, the. Concept, especially around here with our kind of um, pretty porous soils is that the water. Percolates down into uh, the ground into the aquifer. And so how quickly that does that. Will kind of dictate how big the retainer's pond needs to be. And so there's calculations to show. How much runoff will run into the retainer's pond and then depending on how quickly it will vacate that. Uh, by percolating into the soils dictates how fast it, or how big it needs to be.
No, the management engineering has, has happened for it, you know, and it's just for the ground truth. You can imagine like pouring a. Pitcher of water on the ground and putting your stopwatch on. It's much more.
Presumably has to do with the sizing of the stormwater retention bonds.
Correct.
Great, thank you. I just hadn't run into that one before. Right. Questions from the trustees for Joel or for Paul? For Jeff? Hi, Jeff.
Hello, I'm here. Actually, they're a better view.
There he is, okay. Okay, well, if there aren't any questions, we could go ahead and have a motion from someone for the adoption of resolution number 54, series 2024.
I would like to move that we approved resolution number 54. A second.
Swisher and Hike, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, good, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Go on to item B, which is Crossing subdivision, renaming of streets. It's not just one street, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there are stories that go with each of the streets to be renamed. But Joel, do you want to say anything about this, or?
Certainly. And Brian, Brian will bring up the math there. So the, you know, the Crossing subdivision was planted originally in the 1800s with, you know, various names. And there's a desire to take some of these names and rename them. There are no address, addresses on them. Presently, it's, so it's a good opportunity to rename a street. And that has to happen through a resolution. So the Blaine Avenue, which is on the, one second. Yeah, the yellow is, should be Halleck. The proposal is Halleck. And there's a story that goes along with each one of these that I'm sure you all have read. Underline will be Lincoln, which is the orange up on, up on the top. And Stazak is green, which is named after, of course, a fallen officer. And so the proposal is to, to rename Halleck and underline as those both have ties to historic Beano Vista as well. And so the idea is, let's name them after some historic figures and the fallen soldier and then officer. And then some of the alleyways and things throughout will be named after other historic figures within the town. And these were provided by, Susie Kelly is, you know, is kind of his for, for people. So that resolution is before you. If you'd like to rename those in the plat, when we record the plat, those names will be reflected on the plat and then part of the subdivision.
And is Stazak, is that, is that the pronunciation of that? Stazak?
Yes.
Stazak.
Stazak? Stazak, okay. We always struggle with Chapey versus Chaplin. Stazak, Stazak, okay, great. Okay, does anyone have questions for Joel or for Paul? If there are none, a motion to pass this, resolution number 55, series 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 55, series 2024.
So we have LaCretzi and Rice. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And the next item is item C, which is to vacate certain rights of way in the Crossing major subdivision. And Joel, does this also have to do with reorienting the lots?
Yeah. Yeah, so you all may recall, and some of you wouldn't have been part of that, but there was a rezoning that took place with this subdivision to create some of it R3, and the remainder of it R2. With the idea through the sketch plan and then the preliminary plan that was approved, that the, the three lots, lots seven, 11, and 12 would be reoriented somewhat to make better use of the property. And also because some of the, the streets, the rights of way were vacated years ago throughout that subdivision. And really to the south, some of those lots to the south, like there was a, a part of it, I guess Garfield Street doesn't even exist anymore, right? And some of the alleys don't exist anymore. So in an effort to, to take these lots that were oriented north-south and to actually make a subdivision that could make sense and have connectivity. And there was a reorientation proposed, and that's what has been under review, to make them essentially east, east-west lots, you know, with some alleyways in between and apartment building. And in doing so, there are new alleyways created that'll be dedicated to the town when the plat is, you know, finalized and recorded. But at the same time, there are these rights of way that would need to be vacated in order for that to happen. And so there on the screen, screen there in blue, there's an alley that runs through the center of lot seven, 11, and 12. I think that it was in the ordinance that we were provided at the, in the packet of Friday, the first whereas is seven, 12, and 13. The, the second part is correct, but we'll just want to take note of that. But block seven, 11, and 12. Furthermore, on Lincoln, at the western end of Lincoln, it's proposed that that does not connect to T.O.R. That there's only one outlet to T.O.R. In the future, which would be down on Grant Avenue, that T.O.R. would be a little parklet, right, homeowner associated, homeowner association managed parklet. And so I'd like to vacate that little parcel, that kind of blue square off to the west. And furthermore, on the east side, Blaine Avenue, which would be now Halleck, I guess. There was a, the proposal is to split that alley, so there'd be a 30-foot alley for traffic, et cetera. But then that, that rest, the west side of that little go over to be part of the apartment complex and, you know, to make the subdivision function. So, and that is, follows with sketch plan, preliminary plan, and final review, and design review. So, so this would require an ordinance to vacate, vacate those rights of way as what has been described through the subdivision process.
So what will be in that parklet?
There's a pathway, some trees, some lights, some things, and.
Pond?
Yeah, that parklet at the end of Lincoln.
Yeah, that's the zen park. It's going to have rocks and trees, a few little seeds. Yeah, the other park, the big park's going to be a lot more activated. And that's just going to be our quiet park at the end of the street.
And will bicycles be able to go up through the, through the development?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a, there'll be a, you see, this is a different map for the previous, but you can see Rooks Lane and Young. There's a, a little trail that winds through there. And eventually, there'll be a trail. If things go according to plan, it'll belong to your run on the west side as well. But we don't have that land within, within this scope yet.
Questions for Joel or for Mr. Anders? Nothing? Okay, I'd like a motion then to adopt ordinance number 13, series 2024.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 13, series 2024.
And that's with, so that's with that whereas, six, seven, 11, and 12 up top? Okay, thank you, sorry.
Second.
Okay, I have Swisher and LaCretzi. And you already have changed that.
Right, or the document you're going to send, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. That's very good, you're all done, bye.
Everybody first.
The opening, yeah, I mean, the groundbreaking, hey.
Not sure.
Did you get that in the minutes board?
Okay. Great, well, that was good. Now we're going to go with item D, which is a discussion about water augmentation certificates. I think that Joel is still on the hot seat.
Yeah. So a number of months ago, we talked about, we, well, we have been talking about water augmentation certificates. And are they okay to accept? How many are okay to accept? What, what sort of conditions might there be placed upon a developer, a project, to accept it, et cetera? And so I have here some ideas related to the augmentation certificate. There's, I put in your packet some pretty rough math. If I'm doing the math, that's got to be pretty rough, right? There has been some, some feedback with, you know, internally with staff, the public works, but we haven't taken the ideas of the water advisory board. We haven't fully really vetted the, the detail so much. But I'm thinking, I presented them so you know kind of where we've been thinking. And also to see if you guys are like, yeah, this is, this makes sense, keep going. Or hey, let's change this up a little bit, or whatever it may be. Okay, not the math part, but the general. So. Go ahead and do that. Yeah. So, so the purpose here, so, I mean, it's kind of multi-fold. The one is primarily if a project comes forward and they say, we're ready to go. And there's, we don't have any water to form or in the different categories or whatever, or there's some sort of a, a need or desire. Can we bring in water augmentation certificates, right? And this is a question that we've been puzzling over for a while. And we had, you know, some recent activity where we were trying to puzzle through some of this stuff. And if they can only proceed with water augmentation certificates, how do we, how do we handle that? So, and again, how many augmentation certificates are okay to accept? Remember augmentation certificates, eh, these are, if we have a well on the Arkansas River, anywhere else, but really, we're looking at the Arkansas River, we're drawing out of the groundwater. And because we're drawing that water out, we have to replenish that water to the system somehow. And that is augmenting that water uptake with, with essentially surface water. Okay, and so we just bought those 50 acre feet of shares from the upper water conservancy district, which essentially are water augmentation certificates. They acted on standby. It was a little different agreement, but that's essentially what it is. And so we visited this idea with Alpine West, West, where we supply 6.37 acre feet. But it's essentially, we'd collect the water augmentation certificates from the developer for use in that well. So that's what we're talking about. And we need this framework, establishes framework, project by project, with any annexation, et cetera, even within town. So we're assuming we have well number three, we're assuming, which exists and it's operating. We're assuming, you know, at some point, we'll have well number fours in the plans. Those pumps work and they give us a gallons per minute capacity. And all that water will be quote-unquote augmentation. That's what we're thinking of. We have to replenish that. So our basic assumption is, one, we need enough water augmentation if the treatment gallery fails, first and foremost. Big fire, something happens to whatever might happen to our treatment gallery, something fails, we need to have a supply to back up water. And that includes, so we have enough capacity in the well for that, plus the acre footages that we were already committed to, the 50 acre feet of my west. We're assuming if there is a failure, there's, we're like a mandated curtailment of water use, right? But we're also assuming town is going to continue on selling emperors and doing laundry and stuff like that. And so businesses need to be in places.
When you say all, all water through these wells is augmentation, do you mean that all the water we pull from these wells needs to be augmented, like put back? Essentially, or replace?
We have to have a surface water source for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we debit, essentially, we have, let's say, 100 units of water we can pull out, and it's our pumping capacity, we debit some acre footage, you know, let's say 80 for backup. We debit a little bit for our 50 acre fee, we debit a little bit more. And then we have this much left over, and that is available. Well, three and four, that's available for developmental projects, okay? That's our basic non-math math. Okay. So let's say we have 20 water things left in the pumping capacity of the well. We, let's say, whatever that number is, we have to verify, but that, we think, could still support several hundred more SFEs, bro. That's with that well number five at this point. Because we haven't begun to contemplate that. Do we do well number five? Well, it all depends on what the compliance says, what the services, emergency services, what traffic suggests, et cetera, et cetera. What we can handle as a town and community, that maximum viable town, if you will, what that is. But with that, how do we consider bog certificates for specific projects? And this is where it's like, okay, let me know if we're, and this is based on previous conversation with trustees as well, but let's, this is what we're looking at. One. First of all, it's not a simple yes-no question. So I'm a project, I come in, we have to look at capacity in the well again for peak season throughout the town, okay? So treatment gallery, well, three, one, four, what can we do throughout town? We're taking a look at fire flow pressures as well, because that's going to affect what we can pump. And then we say, is there capacity for the project? So household under circuit use and then also irrigation use. And we have to factor that in, meaning we have to understand what percentage of a project is for irrigation and what percentage is household use, primarily because there's different depletion ratios. So each drop of water isn't the same. If you put it on the lawn, it's different from if you put it on your sink, okay? The, the accounting for it. Then we also look at, we have to actually, this gets a little nitty-gritty, but where is the project located? And believe it or not, if it's Cowal Creek, if it's upriver of the high school where Truck Creek diversion ditch is, it is a different significance than if it's below Cowal Creek in terms of just how the depletion ratio and things like that. So it gets, let's just figure that out still. And we can do that. And then we would also need like, yeah, how, how do we know that if we say you get 16 gallons a minute pumping, that that's what you're taking? And so we install like meters, we have to, it's a meters throughout different places in town, you know, so. So this is kind of how, what we're thinking as far as, before we say yes to a project, we at least have to verify some of this information. And we don't have to sit, get down to the, you know, the, the last drop of water, but we do need real basic, pretty defined numbers. Finally, then we have this, this value question for, really, to me. then we have this, this value question for, uh, really some input. We talked about one, uh, I remember we mentioned Chandler, Arizona, and they had that matrix of like, community benefit, you know, whether or not if you get one water unit and then if you want additional water, um, from this other source, you had to demonstrate community benefit. We talked about that, it's maybe integrating that into here somehow. So, um, if this is, do we require a quote unquote community benefit to allow OGG certs, you know, for a specific project? Um, like is there a contribution to address attainable housing? Um, with, you know, a list of few things, deed restriction, short-term rental bans, permanent long-term rental apartments, something along those lines. Is there a contribution to net economic gain? Um, we need qualifying, you know, attributes for both of, all of these things. Or is there a needed recreational, some, you know, some kind of rec thing that we need, you know, or the contributing? How, how does that, I don't know how that matrix looks yet, but that would be something that we could be working on if this is something that the, you know, the board wanted. So, um, so this is, that's kind of the, the general idea. Here's how we're thinking about the use of the well, which is the backup source first, curtailed use, of course, if the gallery failed, how do we supply all twenty-five-hundred SFEs throughout town first? You know, in a curtailed situation, that we have leftover capacity and with that leftover capacity, project by project, yeah, we have to understand irrigation, et cetera. And then do we, or do we not, or in what instances do we say, okay, is there community benefit? If there is X or Y, then we'll consider these augmentation certificates. Or do we just say, yeah, bring augmentation certificates? That's fine. Let me figure that out.
Joel, uh, what alternatives does a developer have? You know, if they come in, they want to build two hundred houses.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what is their alternative to offering to bring these certificates?
Well, whatever's in our portfolio at the moment, okay, and what's available. Um, and then what's coming online, uh, we're hoping to have Bray Allen be part of, um, be part of our system and we don't know what that's gonna look like yet. Um, and so that, so that just is part of our normal portfolio. So this would be, in addition to that, if we've exhausted our portfolio or we don't have the Bray Allen available yet, for example, um, or some other, you know, situation, hey, we want to come and bring up our water, you know, certificates. So that, in that kind of situation, they're, they have a bigger project than what we have water, water for, or various buckets of water for.
So they're paying money for the right to use water?
They would pay.
That we have it.
Yeah, they would buy the, you know, water dedication fee through the town and get that water, or uh, another mechanism would be, um, working with town and we work with the upper art water conservancy district to purchase augmentation certificates for that developer.
And if you, if you have somebody who's just doing two houses here and two some other place, then they just pay a fee?
Uh, yeah, it would, at this point, just pull from our portfolio, right? Through the different buckets of water. So this is more envisioning a, a larger project at, at this point, you know, and, and already setting ourselves up for, um, um, we're getting this framework kind of the, the structure in place so that when we do need it, um, it's there.
We're not coming up with it when we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so our current system right now, the gallery were to fail, we wouldn't be able to, uh, supplement it by wells, would we? We have some pumping capacity in well number three, um, two, two, and, and we have well number two that we could use as well. We have some, uh, you know, some project water we can divert up there. Um, and we have, um, yeah, pretty, you know, we could do some of it.
You should do that recently, didn't you, Sean? Did you have some sort of an overnight test?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Down the gallery?
Yeah, I think like for perspective, like if we were in that situation or scenario now where something happened to the gallery water source, um, we would have well three and well two available. Um, you know, right now I think we're, you know, looking like seven hundred gallons per minute or so in the last few days is what we're producing. Uh, so, um, with well two and well three combined would be a couple, uh, hundred gallons per minute shy of that number.
Love that. And, and I think it's also important in this scenario, we're, um, assuming like we'll continue with some irrigation of fields and things. These are our, you know, town's assets as well as assuming some irrigation of the school fields and stuff, cause those are assets and we don't want to just, um, have those.
So you probably ideally, eventually we're going in the near future, we want to have complete backup on wells, correct?
I'd, I'd say not complete because, um, it'd be, we back up for a curtail situation.
Okay.
Yeah, like we wouldn't be planning, oh, we need eight hundred and thirty max peak.
Like wouldn't be complete backup, be like, hey, it's shut down, everyone conserve water.
Yeah, assuming that some people still, restaurants still need to operate, things like that, hotels, things like that.
Yeah, I would make sure that that wasn't a burden on our system if we were to take those kind of things. I want to make sure our system is ready to do limited or complete backup. Um, I do like the community benefit idea. I think that's a really interesting idea. I liked it when you brought up last time. I'm sure it'll take some legal engine to figure out how to figure that out. I think we got one of those.
Me too.
We're two.
I, I'm sho- I'm chuckling, I'm chuckling.
But, uh, yeah, I think that's a great idea, as long as you think it is something that relates to, to that. And I think that also, I think something like the community benefit idea, key is from everyone just be like, here, OGG certificates, we're good, right? So I think it keeps, you know, the floodgates from opening. It was a good dumb button, listen, buckets of water.
New word to this concept.
Yeah.
So just to make sure I understand like the value of a value proposition is that we only have so much water we can offer out of the well, so not everybody can offer us an OGG augmentation certificate, because we actually don't have enough water to potentially, in theory, just allow everybody who wants to develop to give them an augmentation certificate, cause there's not enough water in the first place, right? Okay.
Yeah, there's two, uh, there's two different things of looking at water. One is actual pumping capacity, like treated water, even the pipes coming out of the faucet. Um, and then the other one is kind of surface water, water rights. And so with the idea that the wells can pump this much, yeah, you have to augment a certain portion of it, a certain portion will be returned flows. And so for every, you know, hundred acre feet that you pump, you only have to replace fifty-six, but at a certain location. Um, that's where kind of well number five comes into play. And so looking long-term, because three is just now getting turned into the system, four is contemplated and on the books, five is just now starting to kind of be, come a conversation of if we were, where, and then further down the line. So pumping capacity is always easier, distribution capacity is always easier to increase than water rights at this point.
Yeah. So just to, partly off that, cause it kind of goes into the question I was gonna ask, which is essentially with the amount of available development we have left within municipal boundaries, can well three and four produce for that, or would we have to have well five?
With this, um, scenario, you know, thinking here's some backup again with little irrigation, that, that, um, no, so it would get us a good bit. Um, but I figure, I mean, uh, the math, I'm not certain enough about the math and some of those assumptions that say, oh yeah, well, we can do five hundred more SFEs or whatever it is. Um, but we have, you know, we, it would, if we take all the empty parcels and some of the, you know, um, ideas that people have had, et cetera. There's probably what thirteen hundred SFEs out there that we could use. This is just within town limits and then, um, maybe fourteen or something like that. Um, those, lots of variables go into that number as well. Um, so we would likely need, you know, a fifth.
It's well.
If this is ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Sure.
Eighty years, yeah.
Yeah, I think just for like perspective purposes, this might, might be useful for newer trustees to, I kind of, you know, I'd say look back at the, the peak demand number that we had with the water, um, master plant, which was a little over a hundred. I think it was like eight hundred and twenty, eight hundred and twenty gallons per minute was peak demand days. And that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. That's happens about, uh, somewhere between twenty and thirty days a year. It hasn't changed that drastically since we did that report. We stayed in some places and lost it in other places. We tightened up our system with our unaccounted as well. But like, you know, um, you know, right now we could do probably like four fifty. I mean, I, we could probably see if we could do a little bit more with well two and well three right now. So that's like half of that. Well, four coming online, I mean, has potential to have a pretty good, um, production based on generic studies on it. So, I mean, could, it could be, you know, it, it could possibly do eight hundred. But again, we don't have the water rights for that, but that would probably give, give you an idea of like, you know, that, that might be something that it could be something that in an emergency situation would be able to kind of help meet that. I mean, eight hundred and twenty-six gallons per minute, peak demand is, it's not cool. We need to do something about that. But, I mean, if we're doing six hundred in our system, I think we could function in a normal day on Fourth of July, keep our tanks full with some curtailment, without, without say use.
Um, third question would be, I guess, um, outside of the idea of augmentation certs or accepting them, um, well, other future opportunities does the town potentially have to purchase water rights within the area? I know to rattle them all off. I don't even know if there's more than a few, but um, outside of us purchasing more OGG certs, is there, are there, I guess I should say, are there those opportunities to purchase other water rights? So.
Well, some, you know, we have the Bray Allen, so we are, um, entering for phase one of water court at any, any moment here. Um, and we'll know that a historic consumption use at some point and that'll be available. Now those will be, those would be, act as, they would augment the well as well. Like we wouldn't pull that water out and treat it. So they would augment the well. Um, we are looking at a there's that underground millennial storage is becoming closer to a, a reality down there by Southern Johnson Village, which we're open to, it'll be part of that and we can come into that at another time, I think. We are also looking at, you know, we've got this, uh, subordinated water for Saint Rose Mesa, which is point eight eight CFS on Cottonwood Creek. Um, and there's some piecemeal we've been working on to, um, hoping that that could become available and secure, right? Which is, you know, we have three CFS now, that'd be three point eight eight CFS. Um, there's other potentials for, you know, we've got some potential credits we can get from our Lisma on the ground, right? At some point in the future.
That's the reason why I'm asking though, is to make sure that personally, I think having a, uh, diversified water portfolio is really important. We want to make sure that we're not just like, well, there is nothing left, so this is all we can have. And so what are our options? Are we trying to potentially line them up, which it sounds like we've got, you know, there's things out there which is great, um, just so we don't get kind of hitch and hold with just having to maybe potentially accept. So just thinking forward in that sense, so, um.
We, we're looking, we're trying to be as creative as we can with a whole variety of things, um, including maybe with the D O C E two and, um, but there's, um, very few actual good water rights available that we can buy. You know, we do have the dry field, that we're still looking at what to do with that. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, until recently, it had been nineteen eighty-eight is what I understand. That's the last time we had bought water.
Uh, that's the last time we went through water court, but the water, the last water we acquired was the Lisma on the ground in nineteen seventy-four. Um, and we still aren't able to use either of those.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Um, so really the water that we're using has been with town since town. Yeah, I think that's part of the concept of, um, continuing to keep an eye on, keep a diversified portfolio. But the idea of accepting augmentation certificates, is there any other? The part of the issue, you know, what are the alternatives? One, whereas we, you know, change case, you can wait. Why we go through that process? If it was something where they say, well, I've got this water, right? This CFS with this adjudication date. Part of the issue is I have this many SFEs. A water right going, and it can change a lot of, you know, what the actual historical consumptive use is from what your estimate is, just kind of loose engineering to what it is actually all the way through the court system. Uh, you can have a loose estimate that, you know, should be, you know, sixty acre feet of the consumptive use. You get more in depth in the engineering, well, it's actually closer to fifty, cause then irrigate actually this whole acreage, the duty of water. So you submit at fifty and then you got a posers in it, then it gets whittled down, some irrigation, whatever it is, and then all of a sudden you're at thirty. Uh, so that's where it gets a little interesting. When if the developer comes in, says I want, you know, I've got a project for two hundred SFEs. OGG certificates are pretty straight line, kind of a understood number, whereas if it's just a raw water, right, that hasn't been perfected. It's pretty loose on what the actual consumptive use is. And so keeping that in mind, I think it's always worthwhile to, by the way, what else is out there? Um, but yeah, it takes time and there's just not a for sure number until you get pretty far into the process.
He's thinking about like, if we own the right though, it's ours, we're not going through, it's almost like a third party, right? It's passed through with OGGs and for security purposes in my brain or just, you know, it's like, hey, if it's our water, right, it's our water, right? We don't have to worry about utilizing another entity for it. And, but I, I agree, yeah, you never know what you'll end up with, especially when you put it through court and everybody wants, wants theirs. And so that makes sense. And so, um, but that's my only sometimes hesitation of just going too far with OGGs. I know we'll need some of them. I know we'll have to work with some of them. But, you know, I don't know what the future holds. And since everybody's kind of pulling out of that one gigantic pot, there are opportunities for us to own our own raw water rates that are good water rates, which there's few, I think it's really important to, at least, but anyhow, this is my.
We have had people inquire, you know, and immediately get on the, you know, do some research and talk to the attorney and engineer and take a look and, yeah, this is good, or this is a, this has this issue or. You, you had provided one a number of months ago, hey, what about this one?
Oh, yeah.
Right? So we, we looked at that and there's, there's lots of things in the, in Cottonwood Lake Expansion Project is moving forward as well. So.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, so if you hear possibilities, tell Joel.
Yeah.
And that's the other component of it is storage and reservoirs also plays into the whole, the overall capacity and what you can provide if you've got storage and availability in Cottonwood Pueblo upstream. It goes a long ways too.
Good. The way I look at it, and tell me if I'm wrong, or close, is that OGG certificates like Bray Allen and the farm are all Arkansas water. And the gallery is Cottonwood Creek. And so, and all our wells. And so, and all our wells will most likely be, are also Arkansas water.
Uh, Cottonwood, well, number two is on Cottonwood Creek, but a lot of that's fry arc that's transferred, paper transferred up.
That's the one like right next to the gallery, yeah. Okay. That just helps me think about it in that way. What other feedback or direction do you need? Uh, or do you feel like you got it?
Well, I think Andrew had a question or comment or something.
Just gonna say, we'll remember when we went through the purchase of fifty acre feet with upper that the town made the discern, the discern that it is worth the cost for us to purchase that water and a portion of that is set aside for redundancy or for unknowns, you know. So some of our, some of our redundancy needs will be covered by that fifty acre feet. Is that correct? Uh, yeah, generally. And so that, that's, that's a with the aug certs, there's a certain cost with using ours aug certs and there's some, there's some strings attached with using them. They're not quite the same as their own water, right? So the town made the decision to purchase fifty acre water feet. That was our decision to use that water for variety purposes. Some of that is for redundancy. Yep. So I think here looking, the question we're looking at here is if we, we, we should continue to accept augmentation certificates for developer driven water demand. But the question is under what scenario do we feel like, is there, is there a decent trade off? Do we get something that would benefit the community in exchange for the extra cost associated with using aug certs and the extra? I don't know if risk is the right word, but you're, you're, you're tied into a much bigger pool of risk which can either lower it or raise it. So I think the question, we have some of our redundancy needs identifying someone in fifty acre feet that we've purchased.
Uh, so, yeah, somewhat, yeah, somewhat, but not for the gallery family.
Yeah. And again, there, that's where there's, I mean, if, if that kind of failure, there's certainly a curtailment.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing is starting the framework of discussion and which direction we go. I think you'll put a pretty good kind of, here's a place to start. One thing as far as kind of the last round of augmentation certificates, one thing that was highlighted when we talk kind of the augmentation certificate component. Yeah, I like well three, well four, potential well five. It is important to note because upper arcs kind of already identified that they will limit potential cottonwood augmentation, cottonwood creek augmentation at ten acre feet, which we've already kind of covered with the fifty acre feet. So future augmentation certificates will be tied to Arkansas River Wells, which is three, four, and potentially five. So.
So yeah, just to kind of, we, we of the town have already made the decision that, that, that we're relying on aug certs for a certain portion of portfolio. The question is going forward. What type of framework needs to be in place for us to evaluate continued reliance on aug certs?
Yeah, and, and answer Devon's question more, more directly or at all is, is this generally the okay to keep going? And that we just kind of be looking for any kind of head nod or be like, no, let's actually just open up to everybody or whatever it might be. That's what, and then we'll put our wheels.
I think it's pretty good to continue the discussion of, you know, what are the, what are the trade offs? What are the cost benefits? Because on one hand, if you say, hey, aug certs are the answer, then just quit looking for water rights. That would be simple. That may not be prudent.
I agree. I think it's a conversation worth having to set that framework. So when we do have the request, because it will inevitably come. We could say, yeah, here, you can go reference our code. Where, where we put it. And so the developers understand what we need for our community to be able to do those aug certs, because they do come with ours. And, and that is something that we have to be able to balance out. So I definitely think the conversation is worth pursuing. And absolutely, and, and looking kind of into that community benefit portion of what, how do we define that? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to be steering developers towards something that benefits us and our water as a whole, not necessarily what only benefits the developer.
Yeah, I like it as a, like set of values, not necessarily requirements that we're bound to. But yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea. When are you hoping to have some implemented on this? What's like your general take or just keep it alive and keep it floating until it's decided?
Um, so I'd like to work with, you know, we've got a consultant specific with the cop plan from Michael Baker International, who's just doing water stuff. And so I'd like to bring her in on it, just to start thinking about this matrix and idea. See what she has so we can start developing that soon and then work it with public works a little bit more, but probably need to wait until some of the heaviness of summer is done. And then bring in the water advisory board as well. So we're some months.
Absolutely. There's not a deadline to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, I think, I do think it is important to keep it moving forward. For instance, if there was a development that came in tomorrow that said, we want to do this and we're going to use aug certs. Right now, we don't have a framework to evaluate that. And so it'd be nice to make sure that framework is in place before there's some pressure to accept aug certs for development.
And that, and that can happen soon. I mean, with the next major subdivision that comes in, they could be asking for it, so.
So it's good, good to keep this on the to do list. Thank you.
Yes. Well, and, and thanks for thinking ahead. So we're not having to do it in a minute. I, I'm hoping we'll make everybody's little things here.
See, yeah, I'd, I'd really like to have a policy in place for the next time someone comes with augmentation certificates. It's gonna happen again.
To the point, I agree with what Mika said, like a framework, but maybe with some guidelines or allows us flexibility. So I don't believe that just because maybe they check the boxes, that means, oh, we gotta do it. I think it's still important that we have the ability to review each project, especially larger projects, to make sure it really is. You know, is it in the right places, at the right fit? What is it bringing? You know, what percentage of maybe affordable housing? Is it, is it three houses or is it going to be twenty? You know, so I think and maybe, I don't know if that's the right words, you probably have that some structure that's uh, concrete, if you will, but they don't want to put us in a box that we have to like, well, this is all good. And I think we should be able to review it and still determine if it, if it, it's what we need here for town, if it's community benefit. So.
You're talking about having like final approval by the board. I like that idea.
Well, thank you.
When we have our buckets on how we kind of want to divide the water out and what we want to use for what we want to designate it for, if they bring the augments to the table, we don't get to decide if that is a usage in town that we really want, if it's a type of business we want. Or, and you're right, are they providing any, we have more control if they're using by our water rights. And I do think that the augment certificates definitely have a place in our water portfolio, but it isn't. It isn't free water. It water is a finite resource. There will be a limit to the amount of certificates they're able to put out. And, and I like that there is a little control of how the water is going to be used. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, thank you. Keep going, we'll bring you something back. As soon as we can.
Yeah. So we are at trustee staff interaction. I was fortunate to get invited to an interesting conference the other day with geothermal. There are a couple of guys who have been trying to, to discover whether there's a, an economic value to geothermal in this valley. And their research is apparently very good. And it's been discovered now by these Icelandic companies. And, and so the, the meeting was of, of the Icelanders, there were like eight, eight people who came over from Iceland. And, and one of them is from recivic power. And they actually have gone around the world building geothermal plants and really changing people's lives by being able to generate power that is essentially free to the consumer. Um, and I think they've got deep pockets. So it looks to me like once they get through the permitting process, they probably will be drilling a test well. You know, near, you know, between here and, and Mount Princeton. And they do not think that it's going to affect, you know, any of the hot spring, you know, hot springs that we all know and love. But they, they said it's not going to affect those. It's not gonna, not gonna cause earthquakes and, you know, it's, it's, um, they, they were very good at accepting questions from the audience, including from some of the people who were most opposed to it. Um, but they were very carefully listening to the questions and giving, you know, decent answers. And, and then the following day they were going down to Denver to a big conference on geothermal. So it was pretty interesting. Um, the one thing they wanted to point out too is that it's not only just power generation. There's also a hot water component to it that can be used for other things, like for example, heating the entire prison. You know, if you could put this hot steam in there, you could heat the prison. And they said the prison is now paying a hundred thousand dollars a month in gas bills in the winter. So, you know, that would, that would help them quite a bit. You could do fish farming. I mean, you could do grow tomatoes. You could just do all kinds of things with that hot water. Um, if you look at it from an entrepreneurial standpoint. But just wanted to update you all on that. And then we have the groundbreaking at the crossing Thursday four o'clock. So, and our apartments are going up. They look really good. If you haven't been over there, you should go check them out. So, Andrew? Gina?
So I brought this up before and we never really talked about it, or I guess I just want to know if, if I'm the only one that's interested in it. But inclusionary housing, I brought it up in the last. I kind of wanted to keep it separate from, we just talked about with community benefit topics. But, you know, we do have a lot of stuff that pops up and we don't have anything in place like that. I know a long time ago, the town had, it was brought up, it was reviewed, I guess nothing happened with it, but that was a while ago. I think years at this point, and I'd be curious to see the current board or if the current, I don't know. Feel for that. Maybe it's changed, maybe it hasn't, but I'd be curious to explore that. But if I'm the only one, then I can understand this. Not doing that, but I would love to get temperatures of folks here on curiosity of, is that something that we might want to consider implementing within major subdivision? Um, and maybe even minor subdivision that come forward? Um, is it something that we want to include that it's just part of the package when they want to essentially rezone or do a huge project that just comes with it? And then, yeah, maybe there's more they can do as a bonus, but with the housing issues that we have, it's, it might take out some of the conversation or the negotiations that we have to go back and forth with. If it was just there already, hey, you have to, the holds bar, this is what's required, at least a better starting point, maybe sometimes where we do start. But anyhow, I've, I've heard before, we never go anywhere with, I don't, just don't have the conversation to go anywhere. And so.
I'd like to know how Salida has felt about it, because I know that they've, they've used inclusionary housing for a while, maybe ten years.
I mean, from my understanding, from the conversations I've had, it's been positive, but I don't have any, I mean, I would, it'd probably be appropriate to have a more in-depth meeting with them.
Yeah.
But you're talking about like having incentives for developers if they like have affordable housing components to to help them. Is that what you kind of mean or?
Well, if developer comes to town and says, I want to do two hundred homes and I need you to rezone X, Y, and Z to make this happen for me or so I can do this. That's just part of it. It's not, it's not like, it just comes with the deal. They have to give us X amount of homes for sixty AMI or eighty AMI, you know, just having something set in place that so essentially more of a framework that says, hey, if this is something you're looking for to bring to the town, we require this community benefit with such a big project, because it is going to impact this, our infrastructure, our human resources or.
We do already have, I don't know if that's.
That one point five?
Yeah, the one point five, the R one point five zoning. I don't know if anyone's actually used that or.
Yeah, there's been, I mean, the homestead has part of it and just, you know, proposed to be one point five. But I think the inclusionary part would be regardless of the zoning, there's a percentage that is it's set aside for whatever needs.
I'd be happy to talk about it. I agree. I do think it's a conversation absolutely worth carrying on and, and finding a place where it fits most appropriately, which like it almost feels like with the water aug conversation and the cop plan, that's kind of where we're all heading. So I do agree. It's really important to talk about.
Gavin, yeah, I would just be interested in how that would, uh, how we can do that without money, because we don't have a lot of money. So that would just be like denser housing or different kinds of densities that your ideas are, or giving developers money or land or.
I think you can also do it outside of incentives and just make it part of like a requirement.
Right, yeah. Not necessarily zoning requirement, but like a, but if you want to do it somewhere, major subdivision, this is what you have to do.
It doesn't have to be we're giving them something. We're just saying, hey, if you want to build here, this is, yeah, this is what you, part of the requirements that you have to take on to build here.
So having all housing developments be inclusionary, is that what you mean?
I mean, that's a conversation to have. I'm not saying all, maybe it's just depends on sizing or where or whatever. But I like, I would just like to have the conversation about what inclusionary housing is and if it, if it does fit into our future, essentially in our framework as more developments coming to town, you know, we know we have potentially, I know these were just rough numbers, that thirteen hundred SFEs could be fourteen, I like, again, I know it's just very ballparky. But I mean, if there is, and that's within municipal boundaries, if there is only a proportion of that left, you know, just thinking about, hey, are we making sure that we have enough for workforce housing, things like that? People coming in, so it's not all potentially market rate. Again, I don't have a plan in place or a specific agenda I want to go with it. I just think it's a tool that we could potentially use to get a broader spectrum of housing within our municipal boundaries and annexations to hold our conversation. But again, just kind of wanted to bring up the idea for a conversation, may not go anywhere, but it's an important tool and about it, so.
I absolutely agree. Is that something that would be appropriate to do during like a planning work session? And figure out where, like, like you said, what, what it means and is it appropriate to put into any of our codes?
Yeah, we can either do a work session or do some agenda item or whatever and pull together some examples, some information and some, you know, some thoughts, ideas, that kind of thing.
Thanks.
Slide into a presentation.
Yeah. Thanks for entertaining that. Just like, just wanting to go for it or think, never bring it up again.
No, we didn't have to bring it up again. Yeah.
Cool. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Sean, since we're on your side of the room, would you like to say anything?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Joel, Thursday was amazing. Fantastic. And yeah, thanks for the topic, you guys, I appreciate the stuff you're working on with Water, thank you for that. Yeah, we, it was pretty, pretty fantastic, going from that event to Water Advisory Board. That's some pretty fantastic topics with that group, and some of that stuff, I think would really be cool to maybe share some of Chris's stuff with his, you know, get his PowerPoints and some of the work that he's, he's shared with us, it's pretty amazing, we won't get into too much, but yeah, we, yeah, we haven't, you know, seen that 826 SFE trigger quite yet this year. But, you know, with the water plant project kind of under construction and the work that we've done out there, yeah, we're struggling getting, getting the water and the pipes that we've gotten in the past, but we're doing okay. I mean, well, three is crushing it, so we're, we're able to keep that thing on and, and meet, you know, our demand, it's, it's a little harder, it's a little more you know, it's not quite as ergonomic this, this year with it, but between well two and well three and what we're able to produce in the guy right now, it's, you know, we're doing okay, I mean, I think last weekend was our, saw our first peak demand weekend, I think Sunday was the big one, I think we produced a little over 900,000 gallons one in a 24-hour cycle, which, you know, we can get higher, we can get, you know, you know, 1.15, 1.12, that's kind of what we see, and that's kind of that, you know, that's kind of that level where we're like having a hard time filling our tanks, but it's going pretty good, so as Brian did, look at the voluntary water restriction flyer with me today. Probably be putting that out tomorrow, and it's just some coaching, I'm going to talk to the school, they've done better with their water use. So, yeah, physically, yeah, it's not water between the heat, heat of the day, you know, that kind of stuff, and some tips and some recommendations. Things like that, it seems to go a long way every time we do that, so. But yeah, we had some painting projects scheduled for this week, but got pushed back, so we still have some, some streets to repair.
Well, Road Street is so much nicer than it was.
Yeah.
Where you put the chips on it, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, thanks. It's okay.
So much better.
Well, I do have something that I must read and put it into the record, topside, excuse me, not topside annexation, tri-vue annexation. For the record, I confirm that on Monday, June 24th, 2024, an email, an email was sent to the mayor and the board of trustees notifying them that on Monday, June 10th, 2024, town staff reviewed, excuse me, received the tri-vue petition for annexation. The petition is currently under completeness review by town attorneys Catherine Seller and Jeff Parker. At the July 9th, 2024 meeting, the board of trustees will complete a completeness review discussion, and if the petition is deemed complete, a public hearing will be scheduled. The annexation process will follow requirements identified in the Colorado statute as up to 20.
Wow. Good, so. Thank you for reading that.
Was that, was that expected?
You have anything else, Paula?
No, I'm glad that you mentioned the apartments, I noticed those today when I left Community Center, it's like, whoa, the boxes are going in over there. And somebody's going to have to watch her speed when she's going down the alley on that new lake chips thing, or else the town, the B V Police Department will be issuing her a ticket. Oh, you could go up to 28 miles per hour.
You don't have to worry about your accident.
That's right, there's no bumps.
Devin?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to bring up to you, town staff, that there is still money left for the mini grants. We're approving it tomorrow at the COG meeting, we've only used 33,000 out of 100,000 for the whole area. So no later than August 9th, I think it's a it's a one-to-one match of $5,000, up to $5,000, and I think the project can be up to 20.
Correct, yeah, we have one minute, should be considered tomorrow.
Do you have the dateification one?
Yep, so I wanted to start with that one, and talk to Rec about a couple, but we'll look at submitting another one by the next round.
Yeah. Or a lot, I don't know, I don't know what the limit is, is there a limit? I should ask them.
Just keep submitting.
Yeah, if you do every project, I guess it has to be capital improvement kind of thing.
It'd be a small capital project or kind of a facade improvement, downtown enhancements. Problem actually is the $20,000 threshold. Yeah.
A lot of our projects are larger.
They at least bumped it from 10,000 to 20,000, so you can start fitting in some of this other stuff, but that is the constraining factor, really.
That's for 2024?
Yeah, well, it looks like, I was just reading the application, it could be, has to be completed by October 25, it looks like. October 31st of 25, so you could think creatively for the next year, I guess.
I got one idea.
Oh, yeah. I guess ideally that would have to be approved by the next budget, but could help.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's lots of money, and the other thing I thought of today, when I was riding my motorcycle back from Corango's, I drove through Pagosa Springs, I noticed they have little flags at the crosswalk on the highway.
So do we.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't even notice that. There's no one uses it.
It's one brand.
Oh, it's been, since Friday, so you were gone.
Oh, really? Like brand, brand new.
Like Friday.
I was like, I was like, maybe we should have these, this has been the funniest, I didn't even know.
The funniest process. Sean and I have been talking about it for a number of months, and all of a sudden it's it's here. We started with the Main Street one, they were installed on Friday, really just as a prototype. As far as the highway crosswalks, did reach out to CDOT, we started that correspondence with them to see what can we do, what process do we need to go through? It requires a special use permit through CDOT, which is fine, pretty much anything in the right way does. What helps facilitate that is kind of a clear picture of what you're planning on doing. And so the idea was to install the one kind of catty corner across town hall as a prototype, take picture included with the special use permit. And so we got the initial draft of that facilitate a special use permit for the five pedestrian crosswalks along the highway. We ordered some flags, we got the first batch up, they're getting used. It's interesting to see the movement, now at least four or five times, they've all ended up on the south.
Yeah.
Right. Going from north to south, but nobody's coming back, I love that. So we started that, the other thing beyond the flags that we started a conversation about is the rabbit flashing beacons that are associated with those crosswalks. If you notice the ones in town have lights incorporated into the diamond itself. They're hard to see, I mean, sometimes I've been right up on them, you don't really notice them until you get there. Kennedy City, I don't know if anybody's driven through there for a while, they just completely redid their highway, looks amazing, actually a really good job for them. Ponce Springs also on the pedestrian crossing that just got completed, you can see them from the slide. I mean, there are these light bars that go underneath the diamond, see what it would take to retrofit installing those as well.
Yeah.
So those two incremental improvements, I think in addition to the stoplight on the southern side. Where this is kind of that sense of arrival, pay them coming into town, and then slow down, it'll actually break up some traffic, so.
Yeah.
We're headed that direction. And anyway, we're just, we're just going to put them up and not say anything and see if anybody notices, anyways.
The fault you've been working on.
Well, thanks for working on that, any way to make those crossings safer is, is huge, so. John did the fabrication work on them.
And the, the ones in Pagosa, were they on state, state highways?
Yeah, yeah, on the 160 or whatever that is, the one that goes like straight through.
Yeah.
We did also think instead of flags, have another separate bucket with bricks.
I was going to say, the Swiss, I saw like a video of a Swiss city that did that, they like painted foam blocks to look like bricks, and then people just carry them across.
Yeah. I've got a friend that was supposed to come to the COG plan with his brick prototype that's made out of dirt and has wildfire seeds in it, so when it hits the car, it actually goes and plants native flowers as well. I was like, you know what? Bring it, share with her.
I guess we could submit it to CDOT.
What about Thursday?
What's Thursday?
Upper, upper Arkansas area Council of Governments is having a a shindig.
I have, I work Thursdays.
Oh, okay, so, oh, but.
Yeah, you have to go.
Let's see, it's from 10 till 12.
If you want to go.
It's a COG event here at the community center. And I think it's all the different entities that they work with are going to have like tables or something to.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll hear about it tomorrow.
At the, at our board director's meeting.
Sounds like kind of a big deal.
Yeah, I think I was supposed to attend, but it worked.
Got to work.
It'll work sometime.
Mika? Thank you to Brian and town staff for the strong and timely communications around the Twin Lakes Fire, the Interlock and Fire, that was really helpful, I know you guys were overwhelmed, so thanks for responding to emails and helping us respond to folks who are I'm sure contacting all of us about updates. And then, this is very random, but somebody that I work with in my regular job from Trust for Public Lands wrote me an email that Earl and how great he has been to work with, I'm not 100% sure what they're working on, but it's something, and it's cool that a national organization was like, you live in Punavista, Earl's amazing, so I just wanted to share that feedback with you, I can forge an email. But it's great that our staff have like national recognition from partners, so.
She gave a top banana award.
Yeah, that's all.
Including the bucket plan, I mean, that was a great article that was written in the Colorado Sun about that. You know, about our water allocation policy.
Oh, yeah.
That you and Philip worked on.
No, you really just flagged feedback, but I, I just wanted to say thanks to the two of you for, for getting that done, not just talk about it, just do it and see how it goes, and if you want to put one up at West Main and Linderman, I'll help you keep an eye on those flags, because I sure do sit there and watch people all day long, so. That's a, it, I walked up to a couple that were crossing the street with a flag, and it was neat to see engagement with everybody this weekend. Yeah, it was, it was a neat thing, so thanks for doing that. And then I didn't make it to the CHA meeting this morning, I was just wondering how the ballot.
It went well, the, the board of the CHA approved some language changes in the, you know, in the ballot issues and went for the sunset provisions using 12 years, so that it would fit within the presidential election campaign. Because they feel like, I think the ballot committee feels like they will get the best turnout in presidential election years, and that that should be good for so the, so it would be a sales tax of half a percent for the 12-year period.
Yes, we're going to those, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, and then the debruising provision is very important, because they, you know, they get grants and, and they've it's not clear that they can keep the grant money if they don't change the, get to get out of the table rules. So, yeah, so that looks like a go, everything's good on that, we will have that, though, we will have that in front of us sometime in July, I think, maybe our second meeting in July. And, and so each Punavista, Salida, and Chaffey County will all be given a resolution to consider. And only if all three pass it, will it make it to the ballot. So it's really important. Anything else?
Yep, that's it, great.
Joel?
Uh, two things, one, thank you all for participating in that COG plan session, we had at least two hundred people, we don't know, 150 people signed up on the thing, but a lot of people said, I already signed, I already let's pass together, whatever it might be, so good turnout, next, excuse me, next steps. We are, we'll send out a thank you email, but then there's a opportunity for, we need to form an advisory committee, we've got a number of people who've signed up, there's a link on the website. Anyone, you know, up to two trustees could even be on that committee as well, we're aiming for about a dozen people. I think we'll have a lot of interest and we'll kind of hone it down, like group, if anyone wants to go, it's, it's on that the website, which is either BV, Be Visionary or Be Visionary BV, one of those two. But it's also on mybb.com over there, too. And we sent you all emails.
Sue Cobb wants to go on that committee, too. She doesn't count as a trustee.
She does not count as a trustee. Anyway, so we'll form that committee, that committee will help guide this, you know, the next steps, but meet at about every six weeks. And then it's going to be a little quiet, we're doing data review, creating surveys, compiling all the information, so it'll be kind of quiet for another month or two, just in terms of COG plan. What you hear about the COG. But thanks again, and thanks to the, the public, and thanks for the newspapers, both newspapers for helping promote it and report on it, so. The other thing is, just so you all know, or remind some of you, and first time maybe for others of you, probably 2020, maybe 29, maybe 2018, we started a process to create a standards and specs manual for the town, which is, it started all public works, basically, hey, I'm a developer, I want to build a road, what is my road like? And here's this manual, it needs to be this sort of a thing, or there's some options available, so it goes beyond what would be in the code. These are all things that are just standard engineering, it's the stuff that we need people to know about, and that'll help reduce all, you know, lots of the back and forth with various engineers and design teams and things like that, so it started with standards and specs, and we expanded it to do planning processes as well, just get, give details on call this person for this thing, here's what you do for this process, here's what you do for this process, so it takes what's in the code and expands on that, so that's been going on for quite some time. And we're almost ready to bring it forward, so, so it's exciting. And it's very thick, so we'll probably do little chunks. And a lot of it, you know, you'll look at it, and it's like, this is what a you know, infiltration gallery looks like, cool.
Is it actually a printed book or is it digital?
It'll be digital, maybe Sean will print it, I mean, I print, I print.
There'll be a print.
I printed it once.
It's a big old thing, right? Anyhow, so that's coming forward, it'll be in chunks, but we'll, we'll bring it forward for you know, some sort of digestion from y'all, and at some point we'll codify the use of that more specifically. And some of the ideas within it, we might have to change some of the code to match rather than vice versa, because some of the code might be outdated, so, anyway. We don't want to show up and say, look at this, approve this.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. The public works team has been, I mean, doing such an incredible job going through and getting this, so. That's all.
Brian?
Just one thing additional, as far as Peterson funding, first step associated with that with Carbonite Street Project as an environmental assessment. Joseph was actually able to find somebody that has gone through the almost exact same situation. Housing project that was awarded money through the same program that had already started. Uh, housing project that was awarded money through the same program that had already started um, due to the uh, the lapse in timing. So uh, the first step and the environmental or um, will be an RFP process. So we'll get that drafted, get that advertised, we don't necessarily need formal approval, but just kind of heading on that we're good to publish that RFP. Uh, there'll be a cost associated with it, but pretty sure that grant funding can also be used to reimburse for uh, some of those expenses. We're gonna move money around from the project as a whole, so. Uh, yeah, heads up that we'll get the RFP drafted and published and that'll come back for you, to you guys for consideration. That's all I have.
Cindy?
Um, I have a couple of things and one, I kind of wrote down so I would stay on topic and not go somewhere else. And then I have a second one, but the first thing I wanted to do I'm not as couth as all you guys, I'm gonna comment on the article in the newspaper for the top side. Um, we had a very, a, a few very important issues that we needed to be addressed to be able to make our decision. Um, it would have been a benefit to have the current COG plan completed when we were faced with this. Um, Topside's timetable to be able for them to be able to collect their capital gains tax and credits and make the money that they needed on the project, didn't allow for negotiations to be worked through. Um, their timeline was very constrained with the information that we needed to negotiate. Um, this could have been an excellent, excellent project for our town, or it could have been a disaster we would require, we would regret. And the point I wanted to make is we had a major outside developer that wanted to make a significant profit off of our town. And we have Joel as our planning director. Uh, didn't kind of like the direction that the paper took. Joel, in the past, has served as the trustee for eight years and he was our mayor for eight years. And he's fulfilling an important position in the town right now. And between that developer and between um, the town and our employees, who do you think cares more for the good of the outcome for our town? And I'm glad that we did not make hasty decisions, whether it would end up being a good project or a bad project for our town. I'm glad that we stepped back and needed the ne- the negotiations. And I just wanted to thank Ja- uh, Joel and all the town employees that spent many hours working on this when that isn't the only thing that they had to work on. And so I just want to say thank you for the dedication that you've proven for Punavista.
Thank you, trustee Swisher.
And.
Very nicely put.
The second, the second comment I had is with the Interlaken Fire. I don't know how well we are prepared for a disaster to happen in our community. Um, I know that all of us have had to take the training. But okay, my training was seven years ago and if you don't use it, you'll lose it. Um, for about four years ago, we were working with Chaffey County on their emergency plan to work as a team. But they had to rewrite their manual and we only did part of the training and we never completed the training. So I, if we had a natural disaster now, I'm not exactly sure how prepared we would be. I know that we, all of us would, well, we had to work. But it has to be done in a certain order and a certain chain of command for it to work successfully. So I don't know if we need a workshop or a review or something on that.
Mm-hmm.
And that was all I have.
Thank you for both items. Yeah. Yeah, and particular your comments on, on the, you know, the failed annexation, I mean, they, they, they went through their application for the annexation. But the negotiations were not really going anywhere. As I could tell, it would leave us with a lot of debt. But thank you, Joel, too. And Brian, for all the work that you all put in on it. Probably Paula, too. But thank you all. And does the media have any comment on uh, or anything to share with us?
Uh, our Christmas in July fundraiser is coming up to pay my paycheck, so. So we know people that like what we do. I encourage them to donate in July so we can reach our thirty thousand dollar goal.
Get paid.
Yes, yeah, all of the money pretty much goes to pay the reporters, so like me.
Yeah.
If you want me around more. If you don't like me, I guess.
Glad you've been coming and.
That's only Max.
Jan's happy, too. She was at the CHA meeting today. Oh, yeah. Axe, comment, anything? Okay. All right, well, um, one more item.
I'm going to do it, Karen.
I'll second that.
Uh, row and hike, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passing passes, the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.